Here, take this one, because I can run back. Yeah, I need to run back upstairs anyway, so, yeah. I had that happen the other day, too.
All right, good evening. The governing body meeting for February 12th, 2018 is called to order. If you have a cellphone, please put it on mute or vibrate. If you plan to address the council, please come up to, I recommend the site podium unless you want the back of your head on Facebook or the city webpage. Address the councils, stating your name and any organization that you represent, please. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Laiborn?
Present.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Yes.
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Royball?
Present.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Case?
Here.
All members are present, mayor.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation as CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body still requests, and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you, Edie. Are there any items that any member wishes to remove from consent agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. White?
I would like to remove items 16 and item 17 from the consent agenda.
Concur.
Item 16 and 17 have been removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other items?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Shaner?
Due to several items on the consent agenda going to the state loan and investment board, I will abstain.
Thank you. Any other items on the consent agenda? Okay, any other items to be removed? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of items 16 and 17, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. Come on back, Mr. Shaner. Thank you.
Next item is number six, vouchers.
Is there any discussion from the public on this matter? Discussion from the public?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cook?
I have a conflict tonight.
Madam Mayor, the other half of the wing has a conflict today.
You two may leave the room. Do I hear a motion to approve the vouchers? Well, let's wait. Well, we'll walk a little faster, gentlemen. All right, is there a discussion from the council on the vouchers?
Did we get a second?
I was gonna ask for a motion, I suppose. Thank you.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Now, discussion by council. Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Yes, I'm dealing with a head cold, so I appreciate your patience.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Shaner?
I move to suspend the rules by bringing forward agenda item number 24C before agenda item number seven to allow for consideration of the Sweetgrass Master Annexation Agreement prior to the affiliated Sweetgrass Annexation ordinance on third and final reading.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaner, seconded by President Dr. Rennie. This motion is not debatable. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, bring forward item 24C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries.
Next item is 24C, Sweetgrass PUD Plan Unit Development Annexation, Master Annexation Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Sweetgrass Land Company Limited Liability Company, Lummis Livestock Company Limited Liability Company, and Arpenham and Hardware Company for an area commonly known as a Sweetgrass Annexation, being a portion of Sections 8 and 9, all of the west half, Section 14, a portion of the east half, east half of Section 17, and all of Sections 15, 16, and 21, Township 13 North, Range 66 West of the 6th PM Laramie County, Wyoming.
Thank you, sir. Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Luna.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Webel?
I move to amend my substitute agreement dated 1/31/2018.
Moved by Mr. Webel to have the substitute agreement, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the substitute agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. We are now back on the original motion. Any further comments from the public? Comment from council? Comment from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes.
Next item is number seven on page one, ordinance third reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, a portion of Sections 8 and 9, all of the west half, Section 14, a portion of the east half, east half, Section 17, and all Sections 15, 16, and 21, Township 13 North, Range 66 West of the 6th PM Laramie County, Wyoming, located to the southeast of the intersection of East College Drive and Avenue C, postponed from January 22nd, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Laiborn?
Well, this is long in development and truly the kind of progress we've wanted and hoped for for many years. I think it's going to change the way that we develop as a community, and the magnitude of this annexation is, I believe, unprecedented in the City of Cheyenne. So, we're gonna really have a big job here. I think it involves a lot of real effort on our part to be thrifty and careful, because expanding those services is going to be difficult, and it's something we're gonna have to communicate to the community exactly what this step means. And it means that we're gonna have to rise to the occasion, it means we're gonna have to seek financial help from every government agency we can, and we're gonna have to really expand our services. So, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful occasion tonight, and I certainly applaud the people that put these agreements together. I know it wasn't simple, but it is far-reaching, and I certainly believe that we can look forward to a brighter future thanks to this long-anticipated annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laiborn. Any other discussion by council? Any other discussion by council? Hearing none, since this is motion on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance third reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, all of tracks 31 and 32, and a portion of Drains Drive intervening, and a portion of track 39, Hill Heights Edition, and adjacent portions of Geisel Place and Van Buren Avenue, situated in Section 21, Township 14 North, Range 66 West of the 6th PM, County of Laramie, State of Wyoming, located east of and adjacent to Van Buren Avenue, north of Delrange Boulevard.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none, this being ordinance on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royball?
Aye.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance third reading, pursuant to Section 2.2.1 zoning map amendments, Section 5.1.2 zoning districts established in Section 5.1.3 official zoning map of the Unified Development Code, changing the zoning classification from county AR agricultural residential to MR medium-density residential and MUV mixed-use business emphasis for all tracks 31 and 32, and a portion of track 39, Hill Heights Edition, situated in Section 23, Township 14 North, Range 66 West of the 6th PM, County of Laramie, State of Wyoming, located east of and adjacent to Van Buren Avenue, north of Delrange Boulevard.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Cook. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none. This being an ordinance on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance third reading, vacating that portion of the 16-foot alley rideaway lie east of the Burlington Northern Railroad spur track rideaway in block 412, adjacent to lots 1 through 8, and 16 through 22, block 412, Original City, City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming.
Thank you. Discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none, this being an ordinance on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Webel?
Aye.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance third reading, pursuant to Sections 1.1.6 and 2.4.1 of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code, UDC, amending Sections 1.4.4A and C, Section 5.1, Table 5-1, Section 5.7.5, and Table 7-10 of the UDC, to rename and clarify the definition for group dwelling, to combine and clarify the definitions for adult care, assisted living and adult care, nursing home land uses, combining assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and group housing for specific use standards, clarifying where assisted living nursing homes would be permitted, and adding residential and non-residential zoning districts where group housing would be allowed as a conditional use.
Thank you, sir. Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Webel?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none, this being an ordinance on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
No.
Mr. Royball?
Aye.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Luna?
Yep.
Motion passes with Dr. Rennie as the new.
Ordinance first reading, amending Section 10.52.200 recreational vehicle, trailer-defined, parking permitted in certain places of Chapter 10.52, stopping, standing, and parking generally of Title X vehicles and traffic of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
This matters to refer to Public Services Committee.
Resolution announcing the City of Cheyenne's intent to expend funds to enhance the Depot Plaza by constructing a water feature for economic development purposes to include a historically important statue postponed from January 22nd, 2018.
Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Mr. Webel? Welcome. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm Darren Rudolph with Visit Cheyenne, the tourism organization for Cheyenne and Laramie County. Just to refresh everyone's memory real fast, about two years ago, all four economic development organizations from the area got together to focus on downtown. We decided to work together to create what we're calling the Downtown Core Plan. We did so because we all recognized that downtown was critical to the success of each of our individual economic development missions, not just for the DDA and Visit Cheyenne, but also for the Chamber and for LEES. Because a vibrant downtown, an active downtown, is not just important for tourists, but it's also important for families, for potential workers, for site selectors, when they're looking at your community and comparing it against other communities. So we developed the Downtown Core Plan. It included a splash feature on the Depot Plaza as a way to attract people, to attract activity, and always have that light, that critical element of activity right there in the core of downtown. Two years ago, all four economic development organizations passed this Core Plan. The DDA funded the conceptual plan for the splash pad, and we did get this on the sixpenny ballot for a short time before it was removed. Now it's back here before you again to move forward. We certainly understand that you have a variety of important projects before you with tight budgets. However, this is a project at a relatively low price tag that does do something for our core of downtown. It adds that quality of life project. It's an amenity that's not just enjoyed by visitors when they come into our communities, but also our families, our workers, our young people that are looking for that quality of life amenity. So we appreciate it being before the council today, and we urge your support.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion by the public? Any other discussion by the public? All right, hearing none. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Webel. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Mr. Laiborn?
Is this the proper time to move the amendment by substitute?
I believe so.
Yes, well, we have an amendment here by substitute that basically will push this project a little further down the road, and I believe satisfies the concerns of some members of the council, so I move adoption of the substitute.
Second.
Substitute adoption moved by Mr. Laiborn, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by the public, should you have this substitute before you. Discussion by the public. All right, hearing none. Yes. Dr. Rennie?
Perhaps one of the offers of the substitute would like the minus of... Sure.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Shaner? I think it's open to council now. Mr. Shaner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The substitute is dated 2/12/18, and everybody should have had a hard copy. Thank you, City Attorney's Office, for getting this done. A couple changes from what was discussed last council and what was on the public agenda. First is that the design requests in this resolution call for a placeholder, so to speak, of a General Dodge statue or another historic statue in the future, but there is no language in there referencing that being put in right away. Instead, what it does is it honors the city's commitment that was made in the April 2016 resolution when we adopted the Downtown Core Plan, which you just heard about, that committed $250,000 in city funds to a splash park in the depot. Unfortunately, since that time, the estimates for the project have gone up quite substantially. We also have some major projects on our plate that we didn't have in 2016, or at least didn't know what the budgets were gonna be. And so this is a public-private partnership. It's saying, hey, the city's got its $250,000 commitment, but we're gonna need the private sector to come up with that other half. And that is really the fundamental change with this amendment by substitute.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Laiborn?
Well, I'm glad we worked out some of these issues. It is somewhat unusual and certainly demonstrates challenges to be facing balancing our revenue, our programs, and our needs. But being a downtown property owner myself and being very involved in downtown issues for many years, I wanna point out that this area at the Depot Plaza was left undeveloped for 16 years, although there was always the intent of a focal point there, and I believe a water feature. I think plazas need water features, particularly in dry climates like we have. And I think that it shows something that we need to continue to adopt that program as the plan of development of the Downtown Development Authority and the City of Cheyenne is something we need to pursue. It is important that we follow through on the numerous concepts and beliefs that we have. Unfortunately, over the years downtown, I don't think we've had that follow-through. And I'd like to point out that one of the elements that some of the council people that I talk to, I don't care for that much, is the fact that this effort is conditional on funds being raised, privately raised, before June 1st, 2019. I think it's important to put a sunset on this and say, we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna proceed with this, or we're not. This is, has sort of been one of those issues that sits out there with no resolution, and that's the reason that I brought this forward with my fellow sponsors originally. I think it's something that maybe you have to experience, these unusual water features for yourself, but it isn't that we're trying to keep up with our neighbors or the Joneses, it's because they work, it's because they're exciting, it's because kids love them, and the parents come with them, and we have that life, which is why Castor's putting theirs in now. We have reference here from Rapid City, but it is not as frivolous as it might seem. It's a tool in having the kind of downtown we want and completing what we started with with the plaza all those years ago. So I certainly hope we can pass it tonight and continue to work with our partners on this, because our visitor industry in particular is really a major industry here in Laramie County and the City of Cheyenne. And when we have attractions like the depot and like the plaza and like the new Botanic Gardens, they have to be top-quality, well-run facilities to compete in a very challenging tourism industry. So this is a step towards that, and I hope we can adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding the substitute?
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you. I frankly, Mr. Laiborn was probably referencing me as one of the people who raised concerns initially about, you know, aside from the city's obligations, how the rest of this would be funded. After speaking with the sponsors of this substitute, I can support this. You know, because frankly, my concern a few weeks ago, and as I spoke to Councilman Laiborn and Councilman Shaner both, I did not, and still do not, feel that it would be appropriate for the city to take on the entirety of the funding for this project. I believe it is a community project. You know, certainly we are obligated to $250,000, and we do need to provide that. I appreciate the fact that there is a sunset date on this as to our obligation. So I just wanted to state that. This is definitely a feature I can support, certainly specifically, you know, after stating in the substitute that the other half will be paid for through private donation, and if that is not raised by June 1st, 2019, unfortunately, this project, you know, won't be a priority for the city anymore as well. But hopefully that money is raised by then, and hopefully we are forced to follow through on our commitment. I would like to see this happen.
Thank you. Further discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, I just hope we can actually raise $300,000. I mean, I barely hit 200K, so I mean, to actually give a sunset clause to June 1st of 2019, I really hope it can be done. Did you guys remove the whereas for that the deposits or donations were to be made through Discovery Cheyenne, through the Visit Cheyenne? Was that part removed?
Yes, it is.
And so if individuals wish to make a donation, are they to contact Visit Cheyenne, or is it something they come to the City of Cheyenne for? Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
In response to the college question, certainly they can come to me, and they can come to Darren and Visit Cheyenne. We look forward to making that mechanism work. It is, Visit Cheyenne has a public benefit five-armed seat that can accept those donations, so that is in place, and we can certainly utilize it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, did I answer your question?
I didn't even know she left. Um, yeah.
Any further discussion? Mr. Luna?
I didn't support this in finance, but after this substitute, and of course, the added, the time given to them to raise that money, I'll support it tonight. I'd like to see it happen too, but not at taxpayers' expense, so, but I'll support it tonight.
Okay. Any further, Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mr. President, through you. I apologize, I should have asked this question before. Do we have any, do we have any idea on what the yearly maintenance costs of such a project will be? I mean, I would assume, you know, that is city-owned and city-maintained area, so I mean, obviously, the maintenance would fall on the city to do that. I guess my question would be, one, do we have any kind of ballpark estimates on what that would cost to maintain yearly? And also, I'm assuming because the city already has a spray park attached to the aquatic center, that we would have the internal expertise to maintain this type of apparatus, but, well, do we in fact have the expertise, or is that something that we would have to expend outside funds in order to maintain?
Madam Mayor, we spent a couple million while you were gone.
Thank you perfectly. It's fine, that's what happens. Thank you very much. I think that that might be a question maybe for community recreation and events, and there you are, you popped in very quickly.
I'm sure some more community recreation and events, there indeed will be maintenance costs, but I would say it's premature at this point, not having the design. We don't know what the pumps are gonna be like, we don't know. We would be able to assess those costs once we have a design in place, that will certainly be something that we will come up with, but it's certainly premature at this point.
I do have a follow-up, Madam Mayor, through you, if I may. I would assume then that potentially part of your process, part of the process of design may be to reach out to some of the neighboring communities that already have these, Rapid have these, Rapid City, for instance, Casper. Would that be part of your process as well, maybe to reach out to them and see what they encounter as far as, you know, Rapid Cities is already built. So I mean, maybe we could gather some information from them as far as what is the cost to maintain? I just assumed that would be part of, maybe part of your overall process and...
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you, to Councilman Cook. Yes, we absolutely would. I think prior to doing that, we would need to have some particulars so that we can do some comparative, but that certainly will be part of our process. Thank you.
Any other questions by council?
I'm sorry. No, I, no more questions. I do appreciate the answers. I guess to me, to me, Madam Mayor, like I said, I'm all, I'm all for this certainly, but I do think that is a relevant part of the conversation when we start talking, you know, when we start talking about, you know, adding such a piece of infrastructure. You know, I think it would be prudent of us to make sure that it is, it is, you know, not cost prohibitive for us to have it. I mean, you know, is the maintenance going to be more than, than we are able to, to take on yearly and, and you know, you know, bottom line, you know, we're going to have to find that money somewhere within the budget when it is, when it is built to continue to maintain it. And it's not going to be, you know, the type of, the type of amenity where we, where we charge for people to use it. So I do think that that is a relevant discussion that we must have. Is this, is this which be, you know, a drain on, you know, the general fund or is this going to be realistic for us to have year in and year out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Johnson?
Just a follow-up. I guess on the June 1st date, if any donations are not met, is the project completely killed or are we looking to build a $250,000 spray pad?
Madam Mayor.
Dr. Betty.
It would seem to me that since the resolution passed by this body put that date in, if we're coming close to that date and we're close on raising the funds, we could probably amend, go back and amend the resolution, extend the deadline if we had to.
But was it, since I wasn't involved in any of the discussions on the substitute, was a ballpark figure looked at as far as what was looked at as tangible? Say, $100,000 was raised, was that tangible to amend? I mean, what was your guys' ballpark that you were looking at that what was tangible for moving forward and what was not tangible for killing?
Who would like to answer that?
Well, I...
Mr. White.
I'll try and provide some, or shed some light on that. The Downtown Development Authority informally passed or moved and unanimously passed support in favor of the amended resolution. The designs, and I think Darren's still here, the designs that came in were as follows. There was option B, which was in about the $700,000 range and then, which, which I think everybody felt was a little too pricey. So option A is the 550K price tag, which is, I guess, the Honda and not the Cadillac. And so with the, with the amended resolution, we're still able to have what I think is going to be a water feature that also serves as a good economic vitality mechanism for the depot during the summer months, but yet not as expensive as the second design came out.
Thank you.
I guess...
Mr. Johnson.
Just as far as my opinion, I just think that we already made this amount of cuts. I'm nervous about more in the future. I actually supported the original resolution and when the substitute came forward, I let the main sponsor know that I really wasn't in favor of it because I was, told him I was sick of Cheyenne being mediocre and if it took a city commitment to actually make something worthwhile, then I was to back it. And so I'm a no on the substitute.
Mr. Leiborn.
Well, I think that point is important to all of us here on the council, in the department that will be responsible, union, our partners, the four economic development agencies. There is no interest in a second-rate project here. But I believe tonight, we're showing our interest in determining exactly how this unique project can come together. And I'm sure we'll all be watching it with great interest and making sure that the end product or the choice not to pursue is a choice between a high-quality project that fits the site or not. So I'm quite confident with the people we're working with and the interests that are involved that we can do something that is far better than mediocre. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? Mr. Case.
I guess probably a question that we don't have an answer to yet. If we go down this road, which I'm fully in support of, and we don't meet the financial obligation and we fall short, what would happen to the donated dollars? At that point, again, probably a question that we don't have the answer to and I hope we don't wind up in that situation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
Well, certainly we'll keep a close record of those amounts and who contributed them and if necessary, they can be returned.
Thank you.
This is going to be, this process due to the requirements of a nonprofit organization in this regard are very strict record-keeping that will give us that ability if such an unfortunate situation comes to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Leiborn. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Just to push back a little bit on, on Cheyenne being mediocre, I couldn't disagree more. And, you know, the one thing that stands out in Cheyenne and this community is the spirit of philanthropy. And I know that if there's a group of community members that are passionate about this, they're passionate about downtown, they're passionate about amenities for youth, there's nothing we can't accomplish. So I'm, I'm excited. I hope we can move past any sort of derogatory or doldrum-type comments and let's get excited about this project that we have in front of us that, that my colleagues here, Councilman Leiborn and Councilman Case pushed forward. And now we've got a path, we've got some private sector partners. Let's get it done.
All right. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Here back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by, let me put this book one more time out there for the public one more time. Okay. Any final discussion by council? Final discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a final plat for Whitney Ranch, first filing a replat of all tract 31 and 32 and that portion of James Drive intervening and a portion of tract 39 Hill Heights addition situated in section 23 Township 14 North Range 66 West of the 6PM City of Cheyenne, County of Laramie, State of Wyoming, located east of and adjacent to Van Beeren Avenue, north of Dale Range Boulevard.
Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public. Hearing none. Mr. Roybal.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt with staff conditions of 1 through 4 and I assume...
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council. Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Wyoming Business Council Business Ready Community Grant and Loan Program for a $3 million community readiness grant and up to $3 million in business-ready community loan funding for the Happy Jack Road, FE Warren Air Force Base Enhanced Use Lease Infrastructure Project lease.
Please, excuse me. Thank you. Discussion by the public.
Madam Mayor, Council, Dale Steenburgen, Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. I think we have a pretty unique opportunity setting before us. You know, if you look at the military in Cheyenne, if you put the Guard and FE Warren together, they are the largest employer in the state of Wyoming. If you separate them, they are number two and four. When we've been going through our community planning process, one of the things we figured out is that in the last 10 years in Cheyenne, Wyoming, the growth has come from military and government. We know that 650 of those jobs we located here, right? And we've got the chance for more. Here's the hitch. The military realizes that we do not have housing for their airmen here. 600 people drive from FE Warren Air Force Base to Fort Collins, Colorado to live because when the Air Force does their statistics on Cheyenne, Wyoming, we have less than half percent occupancy. Last week, I was in Minot, North Dakota, visiting with General Rand, who is the four-star general and that is in charge of FE Warren and all the nuclear assets of the military. The first thing he does when he sees me for the last two years is say, what are you doing to fix the problem? My airmen have about a place to live in Cheyenne, Wyoming. What are you doing? Well, it's a hard problem, right? We're not a great falls where we can go in and put in millions of dollars to go buy up property and build a facility, right? But he looks out and he sees the community spending money. So Colonel Kowitski, the past commanding officer at FE Warren, and I sat down and said, how can we do this without costing a bundle of money and going and asking for direct expenditure from the people and putting, putting the bee on the city like other communities are doing that we are competing with? And the idea was, is that we could use a way that the Air Force really has not used in the past, and that is an enhanced use lease, and that we go out and seek loans and grants from the state to put in infrastructure so that that housing for 550 airmen can be built here in Cheyenne, Wyoming. So I urge your support of this. Certainly people all over this country, including the Pentagon, are watching to make sure we take care of this problem. And it will, it certainly will affect our trajectory with the Air Force in the future because this is an important problem to them, as it should be. And this is a way we can contribute to take care of the men and women that serve in uniform in this community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Stand by. Any other discussion by the public?
7309, he's Purging Boulevard. Okay, you just want to build housing. People aren't happy in Cheyenne, Wyoming. They go to Fort Collins because there's things to do in Fort Collins. It's a much, what would I say, more active community. Go down to Fort Collins and look at what they have in the downtown area. It's gorgeous. It's beautiful. They have a thriving downtown. You come to our downtown, it's dead. Our town is dead. Once a person reaches 14 to 21 in Cheyenne, they have nothing to do. After they reach 21, they have bars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the public? Any other discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Roybal.
I'll be doing...
Sorry, Mr. White.
I'll be doing my Mr. Roybal imitation.
It's the other Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt and I so move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by the public.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
I move to amend by substitute dated February 8th, 2018.
Second. Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Roybal. To move by, to move an amendments, discussion by the public. Let Mr. Briggs explain the amendment.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is just a small amendment because the entire scope of the project does include some street improvements that would be in the public ride-of-way and we wanted to make sure that the resolution took that into account. By and large, it is a water and sewer project, but because we know that sometimes down the road, we have to refer back to these resolutions for intent, we want to make sure that we were clear that there would be a few improvements in the public ride-of-way as well.
Thank you. And just for the, just for the record, you're going to have to state your name and your title, please.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Robert Briggs, Planning and Development Director.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other further discussion by the public? Discussion by the public. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain. This is an item going to the Business Council and ultimately the State Loan and Investment Board.
You're correct. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Just one question. I didn't know if in any of the discussions prior to this, since we had brought it up on a previous item, in regards to services provided, were, since this is off-site of the base, would military police and military fire not respond to this even though on the resolution that states for the FE Warren Base Enhanced Use Lease?
Actually, Mr. Steenburgen, you can go ahead, please, and address that. No, go, go ahead. You're closest to the mic.
So as we went through the, we did a community partnership planning with the United States Air Force. So they came in and worked on this. But one of the things that Cheyenne has always done is cooperate with fire and police service. So there was a resolution that had to start this whole thing about two years ago that the county actually had to start running through. And that would give jurisdiction to local law enforcement and fire. So on fire end, certainly FE Warren would respond if needed because, but I don't think we want security forces guys that are, you know, designed to protect nuclear weapons to be the one in a domestic dispute. We want them defending nuclear weapons. That's, that's their role. So certainly there would, there will be some services. However, I would say with 25 acres plus of commercial development, certainly there's going to be a good chunk of tax dollar money that is going to be generated on an interstate interchange that will help offset that cost.
Thank you for that.
Sorry. My point of reference was more to me getting pulled over on Randall when I was delivering pizzas.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
Through you, I certainly do support this tonight, but I, you know, I do, and I know Mr. Steenburgen knows this, but I think it is, it is important to bring up, you know, anytime we have these kinds of discussions that, you know, I do know over the last, you know, five years that I've, that I've been here on the council, we have, we have approved countless, countless housing projects in the city because, you know, we've, we've heard nothing but we don't have any affordable housing. And he is aware that, you know, that we do, we have turned down very few. I guess my, my main, my main point is that, you know, at the end of the day, the City of Cheyenne and the governing body of the City of Cheyenne has no power over what landlords and landowners charge for rent. You know, I have, I have zero control over what a developer charges for a new, a new home in the City of Cheyenne. But I, you know, I say that, but I certainly do support this project. But I believe it is, it is, you know, fundamentally, you know, we, we do have to, you know, draw the line at a certain point where, you know, we're only responsible for so much. We cannot control what somebody charges for rent, you know? I wish we could, you know, because there, there are not just, not just military, there are a lot of people that cannot afford rent in the city, in the City of Cheyenne, cannot afford to buy a home in the City of Cheyenne. There's all kinds of places sitting vacant. So it's not just military personnel. You know, hopefully this, this will, you know, this project will assist with that issue. But I just, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that it's, it's not that, you know, not quite so much of a cut and dry issue.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion by council? Any other discussion by council? All right. All those in favor of the amendment by substitute, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That, that motion passes. We are back on the main motion. All those in favor of the, unless you want further discussion, further discussion. All right. Hearing no further discussion. We're back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution authorizing the submission of a loan application to the Wyoming Business Council Business Ready Community Grant and Loan Program, providing for repayment and affirming compliance with applicable state laws and regulations for a loan in an amount now to exceed $3 million for the Happy Jack Road, FE Warren Air Force Base Enhanced Use Lease Infrastructure Project.
Thank you. So discussion by the public on this matter. Mr. Steenburgen.
So just quickly, Madam Mayor, to respond to Councilman Cook, one of the cool things about this is that... about this is that we are able to do rent control because it is a lease with the U.S. Air Force, right? So part of the, that lease negotiation is that you will build something that fits within the housing allowance of the airmen. So that is a big part of this. The other side of that coin is, is that once, you know, if there's a point where there aren't airmen to take up the housing, then other young professionals will have the right to rent these at, at the same rate. So that is why we're after this, just so, so that we can make sure that that affordable housing exists for those airmen.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other discussion by the public? Any other discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt an ISO move. Second.
By Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
I move to amend by substitute dated February 8th, 2018.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Sheenar.
Going to abstain for same reasons.
Okay. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
I have a question for Mr. Steenburgen. You had mentioned, sir, you'd mentioned that 600, currently 600 personnel have chosen to live somewhere else.
Yeah.
And I think one of the reasons for that, you explained in Finance Committee, was that the United States Air Force had waived the rule requiring personnel to live within a certain distance. Is that correct?
Yeah, so some personnel, that is correct. Right?
And in your, in the course of working on this and doing the studying behind it, is there a percentage of those 600 personnel members who have expressed interest in if something like this were done, then they would give up the commute, so to speak, and then choose to live closer to base?
Yeah, so certainly, this is a question that we threw back at the Air Force, right? And we challenged them on some of this housing and said, "Look, you're driving to Fort Collins." But if you, you know, the folks that they asked, which they, and these people are changing over all the time, right? So, you know, this was in the past that they asked this, but really, the deal was is just no availability, right? And we can see that availability south of us. We could see that. But put yourself in the shoes of a missileer at Warren Air Force Base. You deploy at 4:00 in the morning, right? Lot of times, you don't get home till 11:00 at night. You're not much interested in that kind of a commute. And as you know, around here, we have some pretty bad, bad roads at times. So certainly, you know, from the, and of course, the company that's going through this with, with the Air Force to do the lease also did market analysis. And frankly, there's not opposition to living in Cheyenne, Wyoming. We are a much better place than what we give ourselves credit for often. And I, you know, this company that we're working, pretty sophisticated. They know their numbers pretty well, and they believe that they will, that they believe if they can pull this off, they'll have a second, second, an expansion of their initial project rather rapidly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. White.
Mr. Steenburgen, since you're up. Do we, on the initial project, do you have a number count of the amount of apartments or what their first—
Yeah, so I think the initial, I think the initial is 350. That's been changing a little bit, but we've looked at some of the models, and certainly, this has developed B housing that fits the lifestyle of a young airmen or young professional. But that, I don't know whether it sets at 300 or 350 right now, but one of those two numbers in the initial bill.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
Madam Mayor, I just, I just wanted to be clear. I want to make sure I understood Mr. Steenburgen correctly. In your rebuttal comments, I guess, did you, I just want to make sure I understood you that, say, the airmen don't fill all the apartments that civilians or other, other folks in that income category will be able to qualify for those?
Yeah, so it won't be an income category, but certainly, it will be opened up to the rest of the community if, in fact, the Air Force didn't fill those. And that would be important long run, especially, I think, if you had any kind of reduction to, to the military. But our expectation is that off the bat, they will go rather rapidly to the airmen there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment by substitute, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're back on the main motion. Any further comments? Further comment? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution authorizing submission of a federal mineral royalty capital construction account grant application to the State Loan and Investment Board on behalf of the governing body of the city of Cheyenne to purchase cameras for Cheyenne's police cars, police body cameras, micro cameras, and necessary support items.
Thank you. Chief Kozak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before I get going in this brief report I wanted to give you, I wanted to show you the body camera that our officers tested. You can pass that around. Don't worry, it's not on. Not like a camera would stop you from saying anything you wanted anyways. And then here is a, the product that we're actually going to recommend that we go with has changed a little bit since our test of that device. So essentially, what we're going to be proposing would be a little lapel mic that the officer would wear on the uniform, which would be wired into the DVR, which is the same device that you have in your hand there as being passed around. So just a little bit of background on that. On the back, the pamphlet, if you see on the back, the officers are very happy there as they're leading the station. So I think the reason they're happy is because there was probably an allegation of some misconduct of excessive force, and the camera proved that the allegation was false. So that's why they're happy, which does happen in the, in the Cheyenne Police Department. For example, last year, we had one of our lawsuits of excessive use of force was appealed to the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals in Denver. It was a multimillion-dollar lawsuit, which the federal court had given qualified immunity to our police department and our police officers, and it was appealed to the 10th Circuit Court. And the judges in that ruling, in their report, noted that the police camera that we had at the time was clearing convincing evidence to uphold the decision of a qualified immunity, so thereby preventing a million-dollar lawsuit, multimillion-dollar lawsuit for the citizens of Cheyenne. So the benefit of our camera program has, has been proven. We've had cameras in our cars for eight, the last 15 years. The cameras that we currently have in our police cars are approaching eight years of age. They are starting to fail, and in fact, only about half of our fleet now have cameras in them. In 2016, we were going to implement a replacement of those cameras, but then the onset of body worn camera technology came out after several high-profile incidents across the country involving police use of force. And so we decided that we're going to have to consider that when we implement the new program. But one of the first things I was hesitant on, a lot of departments in the state of Wyoming jumped right into a body camera program. I did not want to do that because of the fact that there were privacy rights concerns that we had to address, that I wanted our legislature to address. For example, prior to our legislature looking at this topic, police camera or video was public records. So if a police officer went into your house on a call and was filming your kids, your, what was in your house, your neighbor could come down and ask for a copy of that video, and we would have to release it to them. So that was one thing I didn't want to go into that realm. So we worked with legislature last year, and July 1st, 2017, the legislature passed a very good public records law concerning police video. And essentially, what that law says is that police video is not public record. It is not a public record, that it takes a court order from a district court to release the video. So thus, those privacy rights were addressed. Now, the police may release video if this, for a person of interest. For example, a police comes to your house and you want to see what that is on that video, you may come down and look at the video. Another thing is for a deadly force situation, the police may release that immediately because of public concern over the use of force. Another thing is a complaint against law enforcement. The police may release that video immediately as well, or if it's a public safety reason. So in other words, an officer shot, and we have the video of the suspect who shot the police officer, of course, state law allows us to release that video immediately without a court order. So the state law is very good, which went in effect July 1st, 2017. Now, when that happened, we then implemented an internal committee in the police department of about 12 members, which included our city IT department supervisors, officers, civilian evidence staff. We wanted to make sure we were doing the right thing by moving down this path of police video and body cameras. And one of the first things we wanted to assess was the need for the program. Should we include car, car cameras or just body cameras? And overwhelmingly, our insurance company, where our worm, our risk provider, requested that we continue to use the car camera program because it's been very beneficial in defending claims against the city. Also, we looked at, the committee looked at, tested six, or actually, five different vendors of different products. We landed on the one that you see here for multiple reasons, and I can ask specific questions on that if you have, but it came down to durability of the product, customer support, video storage, the type of video, high definition, 12 hours of record, what the DA requested, what our city prosecutor requested for gathering evidence and prosecution of cases, and the cost of the product, which was less than some of the other vendors that we had. The committee also developed a policy internally in the department, and in developing that policy, we worked with the ACLU, we worked with different community groups, different victim organizations to make sure that our policy was top-notch, and we have agreement on, from all those users in that policy. But what our committee decided was, what departments have seen across the country, first of all, is this something that we can avoid? I'm not sure that we can because a study from the International Association of Chiefs of Police showed that about 70% of those surveys, those police departments surveyed, 70% are using body camera technology. 95% have a plan in place to, to, to use body cameras in the future. The surveys also showed, studies have shown that body cameras have reduced use of force incidents by 50%. The police department in Cheyenne, we average about 220 use of force incidents a year. And so why would we have a reduction? Well, because when someone knows that they're being recorded, they're probably going to behave a little bit better because of that fact. Also, about a 70% reduction of complaints against police officers. We, so with that, keeping that in mind, that would save the police department roughly about $40,000 a year in supervisor time investigating these type of incidents. We also have recommendations from the DA and the Attorney General to implement camera technology. Why would the DA want us to do that? Because the district, the, I mean, the DA, obviously, for evidence, but why the Attorney General? Because, of course, they defend police officers on lawsuits in the state of Wyoming. So what we're asking for is your support for funding to apply for the slip funding to the state. As you know, the city would match that 50/50. It's been designated that we would use the funds from the sale of the old police department for the match when we submit that grant. The funding would cover installment of car cameras in 75 police cars and 75 body cameras, as well as a refresh of the products in three years. Why in three years? Because you know, technology rapidly changes, and in some three years, we would update to the newest technology that we have. The contract would be for a six-year period for maintenance and all costs associated with program for six years. And we know that would last longer than six years. For example, our current contract with their cars, I think, was a five-year contract, and we're already at eight years on that. So anyways, what would happen if you vote no on this, then we wouldn't submit a grant to state slip board, which means we would not have the funding to roll out the vehicle camera program. We would still have the funding, of course, because of the match that we have to do the body camera program, and then that would come before you in a contract later on if we proceeded down that path. So I'll stand here for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Stand by for a minute. Any other discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Always impressive when ACLU and police are on the same side. All right. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt an ISO move.
Second. By Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Sheenar.
Abstain for same reason.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Chief, I can't remember the community, but in Finance Committee, you had indicated that as a result of obtaining this type of camera, there was a community in Wyoming that experienced a 70% decrease in complaints. Which community was that?
Yes, sir, that was Laramie Police Department.
And they were using this similar type of camera?
Yes, they use a body camera. It is a different vendor, but yes, they use a body camera. And they've been using that now for approximately three years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
More of a comment than I'm sure that the other nine individuals will vote yes on this, and I'm the 1% of the governing body that still is scared of these things, and that's why it's facing that direction. Even though you said it was not on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? Any other discussion by council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no and Mr. Sheenar abstaining.
Next item is number 24A, on page four, agreement between the city of Cheyenne and SAA Enterprises, Steve Adela, for the purposes sponsoring the CABA Continental Amateur Baseball Association ATU Woodbat World Series during the summer of 2018.
Thank you. So discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public?
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Jay Folds. I'm with the Cheyenne Mustang baseball team. I'm the varsity baseball, assistant varsity baseball coach. I must first apologize. I too am trying to recover from a head cold, so I do have, I'm going to speak with a throat lozenge in my mouth to make sure that I don't start to get a coughing fit. If I do, I will apologize in advance. Anyway, I plan to offer you my perspective on this issue based upon principle tonight. But before I get into that, let me, let me establish the fact that I'm really an outsider who only delved deeper on this issue from August of '17, after the CABA tournament concluded last year, until October of '17 as well, because Mr. Steve Adela reached out to me and engaged me in an effort to try to get me to run the CABA tournament and exclude the Cheyenne Mustangs in the future years. I offer you an objective view that I developed as I realized Mr. Adela could not answer tough questions for me any deeper than his two preferred talking points about how this is, number one, great for the city, and number two, great for the kids. You see, I just retired from the U.S. Air Force as a colonel and a vice wing commander up at Mountsboro Air Force Base, interesting enough, where I had the great pleasure of leading 4,000 superb airmen who do a mission that you know very, very well. And so it was, it was a wonderful opportunity for me to be up there, but I decided that I had had different plans for my life, and I chose to retire instead. When I retired last summer, rather than return to my beloved home state of Georgia, or rather than accept job offers with plush salaries in other cities, I came to Cheyenne because I love this city. We were stationed here twice before, and my family and I fell in love with the town. I'm now officially a proud city, citizen of the city of Wyoming, Cheyenne, Wyoming. I'm gainfully employed here. I now own a home here, and I have Wyoming license plate on my truck and a brand-new Wyoming driver's license. And by the way, it's the first driver's license I've had in over 20 years from another state. So I'm proud to say that I belong to this community now. As stated, let me provide you an outsider's perspective on this issue. I say outsider because I did not arrive in town until July of '17, at a time which there was absolutely no way I was going to engage to the positive or to the negative with respect to the success of the CABA World Series in 2017. But I can't tell you how excited I was when I talked to Coach Rick Thompson regarding the CABA World Series and the concept of 16 teams. I'm a former college baseball player, and I will promise you, as soon as I heard about this opportunity for the kids and the city, of which I do agree, I had a huge pep in my step as I came to town. But when I arrived, I started hearing rumors about how there were absolutely zero teams signed up for this tournament. Since we were merely weeks away, my mind boggled at this fact. So I decided to introduce myself to the board president of the Cheyenne Mustangs, and I tried to build a relationship with him and see what was going on with respect to the future prospect of that tournament. And by the way, he was also the tournament director. The president conveyed to me that the city was absolutely— The president conveyed to me that the city was absolutely ready to host a tournament. The Cheyenne Mustangs were absolutely ready to host a tournament, but he feared that Mr. Avalia was not living up to his end of the bargain by producing the 16 teams that he had been promising all along. As those few weeks slowly moved along, I became very aware that at best, Mr. Avalia was only going to produce two teams of the original 16 teams that he promised. One was his team, and the other was a team of one of his best friends out of Miles City, Montana. And that was the only two teams that he was able to produce. Again, as a former college baseball player, when you add the third team, and that being the Cheyenne Mustangs, I knew that this was absolutely going to be a joke, to say that we were hosting a World Series at that juncture. It was at this point that I expressed my opinion to both at the board, as well as Rick Thompson, that we needed to hold Mr. Avalia accountable for his failure, because it was also clear to me that the financials would be catastrophic for a small-town youth baseball organization. I was not wedded to the tournament one way or the other. I had absolutely no skin in the game at this point, hence the reason why I say I can come at this issue in an objective way. Instead of the board working to find the right solution for all parties, they allowed Mr. Avalia to convince them it was the right thing to do to continue to move forward, as he pressured them. It didn't matter what the financial chaos was going to be, and it did not matter what the optics were going to be. He was ready to move forward. And so, he also knew that three teams was a joke, so he decided to throw a fourth team together of kids who had never met each other from the states of Colorado, Alaska, Wyoming, and Montana. And then he picked up his pace on his traditional marketing campaign about how wonderful this was for the kids and how wonderful this was going to be for Cheyenne. His campaign was focused on emotion in hopes to get emotional people to overwhelm the clear-minded individuals to forget the financial train wreck that was headed their way. Avalia succeeded in convincing everyone to keep moving forward. The result was that Mr. Avalia profited, and absolutely everybody else lost. It's a wonderful thing, and I mean this very sincerely, that Mr. Avalia loves Cheyenne, Wyoming, and wants to keep up, focused on doing the Kaba World Series tournament in 2018 and beyond in our city. But that does not outweigh the negatives that came from the behavior that he displayed in 2017. So let me give you a quick perspective on that. The Mustangs took a huge financial loss, over $30,000 in total for a small youth baseball organization. As a matter of fact, we zeroed out our bank account once the dust settled so that we could pay Miller Promotions much money, as much money as possible. Additionally, four board members resigned in disgrace following that tournament. If Mr. Avalia believes in youth baseball, what youth baseball does for kids, he doesn't seem to care that the Mustangs are starting from a huge hole in the 2018 season because we wiped our slate clean, all because of his failure. Speaking of Miller Promotions, in good faith, they put out a lot of apparel for this tournament last year. That, again, was supposed to produce 16 teams on Avalia's promise. It produced two teams and one made-up team. No doubt's not lost on any members of this council that that's a huge financial loss for, to the negative. This city also lost in the deal. The city graciously put forth $50,000 to pay Mr. Avalia to host the tournament, expecting to be repaid based upon tournament profits. Since there were no profits, the city also incurred a loss. That's three organizations with huge losses, two of which I can guarantee you can't withstand those losses. But you know who did not lose in this fiasco? Mr. Steve Avalia. He received $65,000. He started by demanding $150,000, then lowered it to $100,000 once he realized that no one was going to get on board. Then he lowered it again to $65,000 about a month or so out from the tournament, because he knew he wasn't going to produce, but he was still expecting to profit. Imagine if we had have paid him those higher amounts. But I must ask, what did he do to make this tournament a success and actually earn that money? I would submit to you that he did very little. And we're all now aware of an email exchange between he and the board president of the Cheyenne Mustangs regarding his lack of performance and his admission thereof, and his promise that as a consequence, he would make the city, the Mustangs, and Miller Promotions whole again following the tournament. To date, he's not made any of us whole again. As a matter of fact, I've seen an email from him where he now claims the air is cleared from all those monies back in 2017. Additionally, this past week in the Cheyenne paper, he made a claim that last year is now done with, but you all know that cannot be further from the truth. And now I'm hearing that Mr. Avalia is wooing the city in an effort to cut out the Mustangs completely from any future potential that will help us make up for big losses, those big losses from last year. The Mustangs delivered successfully on their promise. The city delivered successfully on their promise. Yet Mr. Avalia is the only one, the only one, who profited. So here we are tonight, the city council is about to vote to enter into a contract with Mr. Avalia that would continue to allow Mr. Avalia to profit, but Miller Promotions and the Cheyenne Mustangs, both key members of this great city are being pushed to the side. If the city contracts with Steve Avalia, this narrative can in absolutely no way respond as positive. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is a moment of principle. This is why you serve, to represent the city and the people who need you. You have the leverage over Mr. Avalia that we don't have to make this right, not just for the city financials, but for the people of your community. The way you do that is to demand that Steve Avalia make good on his financial promises before you even consider entering into a contract with him for 2018 and beyond. As the finance committee heard this past week, Steve Avalia is already contractually obligated to the Cheyenne Mustangs. Instead of entering into a contract and pushing us to the side, let us partner together to hold Mr. Avalia accountable for his lack of performance and his lack of fulfillment of promises. We need you, and we can collectively make this right for the city and the community partners. Let us not allow Mr. Avalia to finagle his way into the gaps and seams of the community while he also continues to profit from our ability, inability to work together. In closing, I know Mr. Avalia has the gift of a sales pitch. As stated, he personally approached me after Kaba last year and tried to get me to run this tournament, cutting out the Mustangs. When I challenged him on how he could demand that we pay him 50, 60, 100, or $150,000 in advance of the tournament without even knowing whether or not teams were signed up and paid, he could not answer my questions effectively. When I asked him how he could create a list of 12 teams, one month out from the tournament, as late as July of 2017, when the tournament was supposed to be held in August of 2017, presented to our board as evidence that they're coming, he could not answer the question on why just two showed up. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, let me caution you on the list of 16 teams he has on the website right now. I just beg you, implore you, that if you're interested in signing up a contract with Steve Avalia, that you do the research to find out just how legitimate those 16 teams are. He makes it all sound wonderful. The kids benefit, the city benefits, that would all be true, but only when the teams sign up, pay their fees, and actually come to town. And again, he failed on that key element of planning and execution last year. Mr. Avalia preached accountability to me over and over again on the phone. Since he likes to preach accountability, let's make him live accountability by making him deliver on his promises to make us all whole before we move forward with him and Kaba. It's the principled thing to do. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm confident you know what right looks like in this case. I look forward to seeing you make that decision official tonight. And again, I apologize for my throat tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion by the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. Mayor Orr, members of the city council, my name is Rick Thompson. I'm one of the founding board members of the Cheyenne Mustangs, and I'm now the current varsity coach. I have served on the board, I have served as director of baseball operations in the past, and now I have spent the last few years coaching. We are an organization of 13 to 18-year-old baseball players. This year, 2018, will mark our organization's 10th season, something we're very proud of. But one of the facts that is not lost on us is that we couldn't have done that without the support of the community, the support of the city of Cheyenne, and the support of this council. You've been very good to us over those 10 years, and for that, we're grateful, and we do not take that for granted. We appreciated very much your willingness to partner with us last year to do what we all thought was going to be a great thing, and bring a marquee tournament to this town and with it some economic development. We remain grateful for all the support that you've shown us. This year, I want to share with you the fact that already, seven seniors in this year's program have signed national letters of intent to play college baseball on scholarship next year, and we have two or three more that I expect will be signing by the end of spring. I'm very proud of that, and this community should be very proud of those players for the hard work they've dedicated to make that happen. The proposed contract before you is a mistake for several reasons, and most of that you've already heard about either tonight through the presentation of Mr. Folds, as well as that committee, finance committee last Monday. I know the majority of you were there and heard some of the details then as well. Steve Avalia failed to produce a tournament last year despite the fact that he was paid. He's failed to cover our losses, as he promised, orally and in writing. I believe you have all seen now the email in which he promised to do that. He's not made good on that promise. And third, this contract, even aside from that, even if we were starting with a clean slate, it's not a good contract. We now know from some of the due diligence that we've done that this is not the going rate for a tournament like this. It's an exorbitant price, and the first $82,000 goes back to Mr. Avalia. The city will never get a dime back of its $50,000, because there won't be the tournament revenues to cover that. Now that we've been through it, we understand the revenues, and before you would want to enter into a contract like this, I would urge you to do your own independent verification of the projection of the revenues and expenses of this tournament. What we would like you to do is join with us in pursuing Mr. Avalia to keep his promise and return the money and make us all whole from last year. I think our desire to land a marquee tournament in Cheyenne for the economic development that it could bring was a good idea, but last year was a badly failed execution, and it was because of Mr. Avalia. As Mr. Folds said, the Mustangs did everything we were supposed to do. The city of Cheyenne did everything it was supposed to do, but he failed. So for all of those reasons, we would encourage you to not approve the contract that he is proposing before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other discussion by the public? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Orr, members of the city council. My name is Joe Doerdy. I'm a private citizen, and I live at 225 Hobbs Avenue, and I'd like to ask a few questions, if I may, specifically from the contract that is before you. My reason for being here tonight, as I stated at finance committee, is I had the privilege of coaching and administrating baseball programs in this community for 20 years. I don't know either of the gentlemen that have spoken tonight. I'm just here because I've heard about this since last August, and I feel that if you fail the youth of this community, you fail yourself. My first question would be, the contract is made to be signed by Mr. Steve Avalia and SAA Enterprises, and is Mr. Avalia or any representative of his firm here tonight?
I don't believe so.
That maybe possibly tells you something. When you come down to below the terms of agreement to the description of the event, it talks about specific dates of the 2018 season being July 10th through 15th. To my mind, that's during the normal baseball season for the rest of the teams and the organizations in the community, so I'm asking, will any of these dates conflict with utilization of the four or five fields that he specified by any other baseball organizations in this community besides Kaba? Could anybody answer that?
Mr. Doerdy, actually, what we'll do is we'll take a list of your questions, and then Mr. Sanchez, I see him kind of in the back waiting to peel up, so we'll keep track of your questions and answer them.
Thank you for that, Mayor. My next question is, where it states responsibilities of SAA Enterprises, it states that there will be a minimum of 12 teams in this tournament, and my question is, is one or any of those teams Cheyenne or Wyoming teams? Coming to page two of the contract, it states the cost of the event, specifying that the national fee to host the event is $65,000. And I'm, my question, and I believe Mr. Thompson raised it as well, is $65,000 a normal going rate for hosting a Kaba tournament? In item B below that, it states that there will also be a $2,800 fee for something called AABC for Connie Mack qualifier. Can anybody explain to me what a Connie Mack qualifier is and why there's a $2,800, a separate fee for a Connie Mack qualifier? Finally, there's a $100 fee for 33 games totaling $3,300 for game management. And I guess my question is, what is game management and who will be paid that $100 per game? Come to section four, number, item number four on the contract, it states that SAA Enterprises shall provide a $75,000 credit to the city to be used against the expenses. Madam Mayor, I'm not familiar with what a $75,000 credit is. Could somebody please explain that? And it goes on to talk about a $25,000 credit in item little i. It also goes on to talk about a revenue statement being provided in little two i, but it does not specify when that itemized report will be provided. In an item three i, it talks about another $25,000 that would be provided as a credit towards the 2019 series, and I'm not familiar what that is. I think what I really want to know is, is any money really changing hands here? Because I think a credit means something other than money coming out of his pocket, which we gave him last year, and going back into the taxpayer's pocket this year. And I just don't see that happening. There's also another reference in item little iv, talking about another $25,000 for the 2020 series. So, again, I would ask for somebody to specify what that credit is in each of those three So, if I understand this correctly, and I believe I do, that this governing board gave $50,000 last year to Mustangs Baseball, and in turn, they gave $50,000, that $50,000 plus some of their own money to Mr. Avalia. And my question is, what happened to that $50,000? What did that $50,000 actually buy anybody that in some way, shape, or form benefited the boys that play baseball in this community or benefited this community? So, I'd like an answer to that, if I could. When we come to the third page of the contract, and I'm getting close to being done here, why would you consider doing business with somebody, again, on a three-year contract that didn't perform on the past contract that you entered into business with them? I just, I just can't figure that one out. And that's my final question.
Thank you, Mr. Doerdy. I'm going to ask Mr. Jason Sanchez to come forward and...
Thank you for your time.
If anyone can answer those questions, it would be this gentleman. We'll give him the first crack, and then we'll let the city attorney follow.
Madam Mayor, members of the governing body, Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Those are all great questions that Mr. Doerdy asked, and I'll do my best to answer them. I agree, it would have been very beneficial if Mr. Avalia was present or any members from the Kaba organization. I will let you know that I'm not here to advocate on behalf of Kaba or Mr. Avalia or the Mustangs. I'm here to just give you information and provide answers as I can. Mr. Thompson and his group gave a very great opening statement. I don't argue any points that they made. Let me explain kind of where the city's at in our department and why we asked to move forward last year, and the reason we moved this or presented this contract to you this year. year. We were approached last year by the Mustangs. They had been in talks with Mr. Avila and the folks from Kaba to bring this awesome tournament to Cheyenne. We jumped on board. We thought it would be a great opportunity for our community. We thought it would be an awesome opportunity for our local youth to have a World Series here. It's a tournament in which if it was, if we were not to host, they may not otherwise have an opportunity to participate in a tournament of this magnitude. So we thought it was a win-win. We sat in the mayor's office, we had, they did press releases, media announcements, talking about the amount of teams that were going to come. Mr. Avila did say 16 teams from around the Northwest. And yes, there were only four teams in this tournament. That was a disappointment to everyone. And so at the conclusion of that tournament, Mr. Avila started to contact our department and say, here's what we feel went wrong. The tournament was too late in the year. The tournament went too many days. It was planned for too many days. If we did an invite versus a qualifying tournament, we'd get more teams here. So we listened to all that, and he kept pursuing, again, writing emails, submitting thoughts. This is how we can improve. Here's what we believe went wrong. This is what we feel we should do to make it correct. Unfortunately, we had not heard from the Mustangs. We had not heard, hey, this is how we feel the tournament turned out. This is what we propose going forward. Last week, tonight, we're hearing that they want to be the hosts, that they have a contract. If that is indeed the case, we did not know. Okay, there was no email trail from the Mustangs organization to us saying that they are actively in a five-year contract. Our contract with the Mustangs was, here's our sponsorship, our $50,000, and at the conclusion of the tournament, this is how we expect to be repaid. Our deal was with them. We were not in a contract with Kaba. Excuse me. So again, we hadn't heard from the Mustangs up until recently about what their plan is moving forward. If they want to pursue this tournament and an agreement they have with Mr. Avila, we're all for it. We just need to know what that plan looks like moving forward. How are we involved? What is their plan to make the city whole on the $50,000 that we had sponsored them? If they could provide that information, that'd be outstanding. But right to date, we have not heard that. We do know that Mr. Avila and the folks from Kaba are saying that there are 17 teams currently signed up for the tournament and that 16 have paid. I believe they emailed today, I don't know how many of you, but they did send an email today, their president, saying that that is absolutely true, that 16 teams have paid their entry fee. In regard to Mr. Doherty's questions, are there other local teams or Wyoming teams registered to play? And the answer to that is yes. There are a couple of teams from Wyoming. I believe one is from Casper. And I apologize, I'll try to find that. The short answer is yes, there are some teams from Wyoming. I understand that one of our other local teams, Post Six, has already entered. And we would assume that if this tournament is here, as the host city, both of our teams, our local teams, would be welcome to play. The average cost of the tournament, to be honest with you, for a tournament of this magnitude, I would assume that that is the cost. That's why I would assume the Mustangs entered into that agreement last year. What do we expect to get out of it? It's the economic impact to our community. Yes, we want to be repaid for our investment, proceeds from the tournament, ticket sales, concessions, things of that nature, but also the economic impact to our community. With that many teams staying in our hotels, going out to eat, buying gas, things of that nature, there's an economic impact to our community. The Connie Mack qualifier check, the winner of this tournament would be eligible or would automatically qualify for the Connie Mack World Series. And so the entry fee for that team is $2,800, and so that's what those dollars would go The game management, the contract that we have before us is that that organization would provide all of the scorekeeping, all the announcements, everything that takes place during the game, and so that's what those fees would be used for. Again, we've had a great working relationship with the Mustangs over the years. This was an excellent opportunity in our mind last year. We would like to be able to keep it here. The reason by keeping it here is that they applied the $50,000 that we had already invested and utilize it over the next two years. And the third-year credit is, they're stating that they would credit us $25,000 without having to any up another $25,000. I hope I've answered your questions. I will be on the side to answer any more questions. Again, I wish that these folks would be here to answer. I don't want to speak on their behalf. I'm just explaining how we are involved and why.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hackle, is there anything else that you want to answer that? Are there any questions we're asked?
No, I think, Sylvia Hackle, city attorney, the questions that Mr. Doherty asked and the comments that Mr. Sanchez just made, deal with the substance and detail of the tournament, and I think he handled it well. I do want the council to know that the substance of this contract, the details came from both Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Avila. I drafted the contract in an effort to make it as absolutely tight as we could, knowing that last year's agreement with the Mustangs did not have any mechanism for the city to recoup its costs against the Mustangs, nor would we have wanted to enter into litigation against them to get those costs back. Nor did the Mustangs' contract with Mr. Avila, which finally surfaced just last week, have any mechanism in it for recouping costs when he didn't do his job either. So I tried to make this as tight as possible, but the bottom line is this, there is no contract that can force specific performance on part of a party. And so this is only as good as both parties intend for it to be. And I will be honest and tell you that Mr. Avila, it's been like trying to pin down a cloud dealing with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other further public comments? Further public comments? Okay, hearing none. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the motion to approve failed. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the Finance Committee on this item.
All right, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, just for the sake of discussion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Case, seconded by Mr. White. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I, it's really unfortunate for our kids that we're sitting up here arguing about what could be a benefit to the community. I'm really disappointed. I spoke to Mr. Avila last week, and I invited him or any representatives to come and tell their story. Clearly, that didn't happen. I'm concerned about the registrations, you know, the pattern here is one of distrust, I guess. And an email from the president of this organization saying that, oh, yes, these teams are registered and ready to go. I just got a hard time believing it. This CAF situation, I've talked to other communities as well that host these kinds of things, and by and large, no municipality puts funds on the front end of these things, perhaps on the back end after things are said and done, but definitely not on the front end. There's no way that we're going to get our $50,000 back, and I believe that's sad for the, that's a sad situation for the Mustangs, and it's a sad situation for the city. The only upshot that I see to approving this contract and having the World Series here would be that Miller Promotions would have an opportunity to recoup their losses. And again, a sad situation that was forced by an individual that didn't have the courage to send a representative here today to plead that case. I guess I don't have much else to say, other than it's really sad that we, I'm going to be a no on this. Not at all sending a message that I don't support the youth, and not at all sending a message that I don't want these kinds of events, but clearly, we need to do a better job on our due diligence in the future, should we pursue something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Thank you. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I did a lot of research on this issue over the past week. So I'll just go through what I've been able to find out. Mr. Case is correct. I spoke to officials from youth baseball organization, Parks and Rec, and town council from Miles City, Montana, and Frederick, Colorado. Miles City, Montana, is scheduled to have the 14-and-under Kaba World Series. Frederick, Colorado, is scheduled to have the 16-and-under World Series. Frederick did confirm to me that they are in fact sold out, as their website suggests. The folks from Miles City, Montana, 2,800 people, two baseball, two youth baseball organizations that don't really like one another too much up there, surprise. And they had a similar experience with Mr. Avila. He promised them 12 teams last summer. Four showed up. The baseball organizations up there went to their town council for financial assistance. Their town council said absolutely not. They're going to put on a tournament this year anyway and give Mr. Avila a chance to redeem himself. Frederick's, officials from Frederick, Colorado, told me if we vote no tonight, they are going to hold this tournament in northern Colorado. I know Mr. Case alluded to distrust, certainly there is that, in trying to find a way to support this, because in the end, I just want our kids to be able to play baseball. And I want our community to enjoy the economic benefits of a tournament with a lot of teams from out of state. So I obtained contact information from each of the teams listed on the website as having already registered for this tournament. Pardon me, I got a little busy today, but I was only able to reach nine. And I was able to talk to two teams from New Mexico, one from Southern California, one from Montana, five from Colorado. I did call Mr. Lane from Post Six, and a gentleman from Casper was not able to talk to them. But of the nine that I did speak with, they did confirm that they had submitted payment for this tournament. So I, as well as anybody, am not thrilled with doing a contract with Mr. Avila. I'm especially not thrilled with, you know, maybe one year I could see, just to see how it goes and if he is able to redeem himself like the folks from Miles City, Montana are doing. But a three-year contract concerns me a little bit. I will point out to my colleagues, and I do applaud the work by the city attorney's office in revising this contract. Ms. Hackle, I don't know if you can answer this, or if Mr. Sanchez can. This contract was supposed to have some mechanism where if a team canceled, then there was going to be a fee that was non-refundable. Is that, was that correct?
Madam Mayor, Sylvia Hackle, I'm going to, with Councilman White's permission, defer that one to Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman White. That is correct. The folks from Kaba have made a non-refundable deposit on the team, on the tournament. So once they pay, it's non-refundable.
Is that the entire amount? Madam Mayor, excuse me. Madam Mayor, through you. Is that the entire $1,450 amount?
Madam Mayor, through you, I believe that is correct. The other caveat that Ms. Hackle put in place was that if Mr. Avila failed to produce at least 12 teams, he had to foot the entire bill.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you.
Mr. White. Thank you. Madam Mayor, the last comment I have, it was mentioned earlier, that the registration fee is an exorbitant amount, and that's not the case. We are higher, but there are several tournaments listed who charge $1,350 per team. Just depends on the location, but that is, it's the common price. So just some information I wanted to share with both my colleagues and the public, and we'll vote on it.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, if you will, the one question that I don't believe was answered of Mr. Doherty's, and that is regarding the playtime, the July date, and if we have other teams that might be taking the field, or how that might work for sharing fields at that time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Well, if the tournament is here, our hope, our desire would be that both our local teams are playing, and so there would be no interference with the field use.
Thank you for that answer. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor, one more comment, I apologize. Also, Councilman Case made a great statement in that, in all the communities that I spoke to, and I spoke to a third one from Marietta, Georgia, none of their councils, or city or town, provide financial assistance to any of the youth baseball organizations to hold these tournaments. It is up to those local youth baseball organizations to provide umpires, concessions, clean up bathrooms afterwards, sponsorships. The only thing in those three communities that I spoke with, the only thing those communities provide is a field in good working condition. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. President.
We've talked a lot, and perhaps I just heard a lot of this, so perhaps the answer to this was given and I just missed it, but I'd kind of like an explanation of, I guess, paragraph four on page two. I don't know if Mr. Sanchez or Mrs. Hackle would be the appropriate person, but, and Mr. Doherty asked this question too, but it says that $50,000 of credit will, from the funds of the city, will be used. And then it refers to an i of $50,000, $25,000 credit. Three i has $25,000 credit. Four has, or iv has another $25,000 credit. Is that monies that will be, is it going to be deposited in accounts somewhere, or an escrow account? I mean, how do we know that those monies are present? And how do we know that we will have access to that?
Mr. Sanchez.
Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Rennie. So last year, we entered into an agreement with the Mustangs, and we contributed $50,000 to bring the World Series here last year. What Mr. Avila is proposing is that that $50,000, $25,000 of it be applied to host the tournament this year. $25,000 of that $50 be applied to the following year, and then they credit us $25,000 for the third year. What they're proposing, what he, and their hope is that, obviously, this tournament goes over very well and we have success over the next three years. Does that answer your question?
So they're crediting back our $50,000?
Madam Mayor, through you, that is correct. They're taking the $50,000 that we already paid and applying it to the next two years.
Madam Mayor, my understanding, reading this, we paid that to the Mustangs. So how does Mr. Avila get to use that money credited, crediting it back to us?
Ms. Hackle?
Sylvia Hackle, city attorney. President Rennie, my understanding is that the Mustangs passed that $50,000 straight through to Mr. Avila, and it sounds like an additional $15,000, though I'm looking to Mr. Thompson, but it sounds like a total of 65 last year went to Kaba from the Mustangs, of which $50,000 originated with the city.
Right, I understand. Okay, so the money was passed on through, and Mr. Avila supposedly has our $50,000, and he's going to credit it back to us. So then my question becomes, I mean, it's nice that's in the contract, but still, does that go into an escrow? that go into an escrow account somewhere where we know we will have the $50,000?
And does that mean instead of 65, instead of us writing him a check for $65,000, we write him a check for $40,000?
Mr. Avila, I don't believe we're writing Mr. Avila any money. We are actually hosting a tournament for three years for the cost of the $50,000 that we initially put up front.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
If I might, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who came up with this language of $50,000 credit, or $75,000 in credits, 25 each year, whether that was our language or his, but I would suggest that that is simply language to pacify the voters, the community, and suggest that some way we're getting our money back when in fact we're not. Because generally municipalities, as I said before, don't front money on these types of tournaments, definitely not at the front end, and if they do, it's always after the fact.
Madam Mayor.
It's true.
Mr. President.
That may be true, but trains loaded at the station, we've already fronted money. So I guess my question is, I mean, that's great that we're going to get a line of credit or credit for that, but it still goes back to, is it his word that the credit is there, or is it going into an account somewhere?
Ms. Hackle? Sylvia Hackle, City Attorney. It's his word.
Okay. And one last question, Madam Mayor. Looking at the contract, somewhere in the provisions, it says that, oh, under 1A in page three, is that SAA Enterprises and the city will split any profits evenly. Have we heard an estimate of what, if there actually are 17 teams, have we had any kind of estimate of what those profits might be?
Mr. Sanchez.
Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Rennie. I really don't have any solid numbers to go off of. Again, this is a contract proposed by Kaba. If we had some teams arrive last year, we'd have a better guess at how much revenue could be generated from gate admission, concession sales, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Just a quick question, Mustangs team, are you still under contract with Kaba?
Madam Mayor, through you. Yes, we are. So last year, we negotiated a five-year contract to host the tournament here. There was some question about what our intentions were going forward. At the end of the season, we had Mr. Folds be our point person for communications with Mr. Avila. And what we told him is that he needed to make everybody whole for his failure before we could start planning for 2018. It had to happen. The city, the Mustangs, the Millers, we all needed to be paid for his failure. That's not what he wanted to hear, even though he had promised that, so he cut off communications with us. We didn't know that he was communicating directly with the city, and what we now know is that he was doing an in-run to ignore us and go around us and contacted Mr. Sanchez. And we weren't part of those discussions. We didn't even know they were going on. We didn't learn about them until in January at a field scheduling meeting, when it was brought up by the other baseball organization town, asking a question about it. And that was the first we heard that he's been trying to contract with the city. So in answer to your question, legally, his contract with you is an interference with our contract with him. I don't think you can have two contracts for the same tournament with two different people. So legally, I don't know how he even gets around that. I don't believe he can. Thank you. Let me add one thing about the tournament revenues, as I could, since that was brought up. We were supposed to, for all the work that we did to put on the tournament, we were supposed to get those revenues. That's where the money was going to come from to pay back the city, is the entry fees, the hotel revenue fees. We were supposed to get $20 per night, per room, for each room that was booked through the hotels that we had blocked, and we were supposed to get the gate admission fees. Well, entry fees, if everybody showed up, 16 teams paying $1,350, that's just a little over $20,000. Only one team paid, his team. He let his buddy's team play for free, and even though we demanded payment of those entry fees, they still had never paid us. And the team he put together to make a fourth team, so we just could say we had four teams, he didn't pay for that team either. And we've demanded that payment from him, there's been no real reason given. Why wouldn't you pay the entry fees? The discussion about the going rate, I was not talking about the going rate of entry fees, the $1,450, $1,350. We're playing in a qualifier, this $1,200. We're talking about going to a tournament somewhere else that's in that range. That's not, that's not what we're saying is not market. It's the $65,000 that he charged us last year, and that he's seeking to charge you off the top. That $65,000 that says Kaba, that's him. He's going to take the first $65,000 right off the top. I spoke to a tournament director, there was a Connie Mack World Series qualifier recently advertised in Albuquerque, New Mexico, the week before. I called the tournament director, his name's Ryan Brewer, it's on their website, and I had a nice long conversation with him, and he was willing to tell me how much he's paying double ABC to host their Connie Mack World Series qualifier, $5,000. And he gets all the gate, he gets all the entry fees, and he gets whatever else he raises from concessions of the tournament. That's less than a tenth of what Mr. Avila is trying to drag out of this community again.
Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I just want to clear this whole credit situation up, if we can, through you perhaps, to Sylvia. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, in this contract, credit really is essentially that he's giving us the tournament for free. There's no going to be a day where he's actually going to give us $25,000 this year, $25,000 next year, and $25,000 the year after that. That money's gone, and in the, this really is essentially a gift, right? And that, from him, a gift, using that term very loosely, that he's going to do this tournament for free.
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Case. In, in brief, point one, there is no more money to go from the city to him. And point two, the theory is, is that against these expenses outlined on page two of the contract, he will provide a credit to the city, and then only if enough revenue comes in for him to meet all his expenses, will he get paid, so to speak. That's the theory. That's how this reads. I found it extremely convoluted, and wrote it as clearly as I could. But that's how it is supposed to work. I hope that addresses your concern.
And I think it does, but just, Madam Mayor, to clarify, there's not going to be a day where Mr. Avila is going to write a check at the end of this tournament to the city for $25,000 and do the same the following two years. That money's gone, and we're not going to see it back. Is that clear?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Case, that is correct. The only way the city will see any money, and it's put forth in another provision of the contract, is if the revenues exceed expenses, and those revenues will then be split. That's the only way in which compensation will return, or monies will return to the city.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, through you to Sylvia, just to build off of that, so is the threshold for the, for the revenues then, the $25,000, or is it the $50,000?
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Cook. I believe if you look on page two of the contract, where the expenses are totaled as $82,350, that those are what are anticipated if the revenues are the expenses against which the city has a $25,000 credit. The city is not going to expend any more money, so the tournament would have to produce basically that $82,350 plus in order for any funds to come to the city.
So basically, basically, he's, because he's got such a, such a big and warm heart, he's, and we've already given him $50,000, so he's being kind enough to pick up our tab, so to speak, with these credits.
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Cook. I've not checked with a cardiologist on that. I...
We both know a good one, though.
That's true. This, I believe, was his way to try to entice the city into entering into the contract.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, do I have just a few comments? We've pretty much belabored this one enough, but, you know, I walked into this meeting tonight fully intent of somehow maybe seeing, seeing a way that I could, could support this. You know, I talked to Mr. Case and Mr. White a lot the last handful of days, and I knew Mr. White had done, had done his research and his homework, and had found out that there was in fact some, some commitments by, by several teams to pay and to come and play. You know, as was discussed at Finance Committee, you know, this, quite frankly, this is the kind of issue that's, that's near and dear to my heart. You know, I've coached in these tournaments, I've had the opportunity to play in these kinds of tournaments in, you know, communities, or have gone, you know, to New Ulm, Minnesota, Spencer, Iowa, Manhattan, Kansas, you know, to name a few over the years. You know, it does, it really does bother me, frankly, that Mr. Avila decided to stick it to the city of Cheyenne and local businesses. And I, it really bothers me that, I just don't see any way how we can possibly support, given this entity another opportunity. It, I can't take credit for this, but maybe Mr. Case can speak to this and confirm this, but I do believe in our discussion, you know, another, another point to me that really tells us all we need to know, is that I believe in a discussion that I had with, with Mr. Case last week, that Steve Avila's company is pretty much defunct, or at least our understanding is that his LLC that was filed and registered in the, in the state of Washington doesn't even exist anymore. And his home, his home community, of at least my understanding, is Seattle, Washington, won't host his tournaments anymore. To me, that's a, that's a giant red flag, when your home community and a municipality much bigger than the city of Cheyenne doesn't want you around. You know, that, that tells me all we need to know. As much as it hurts to, to deny this opportunity in the city of Cheyenne, and like Mr. White said, you know, quite frankly, send business to the folks in Frederick, Colorado, I can't, I can't see any way that I can support this contract tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Madam Mayor, I guess, and I hope that Mr. Sanchez can answer this, but in reading the contract, at the bottom of page two, I, so I understand Mr. Avila's responsibilities, you know, reading those, and he's going to pick up $82,000 some dollars in expenses. But then at the bottom of page two, and the, like, 2 through 11 on page three, it lists what the city's responsibilities are. I presume there's a significant expense there, just in employee time that employees are going to have to spend meeting those. Do we, does, do we have, does the city have an estimate of what those expenses are going to be during that period?
Mr. Sanchez.
Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Rennie. Last year, the expenses were about $1,000. We have multiple tournaments in town, and multiple games on a daily, weekly basis, and this is generally the type of prep that we do. Last year, we were doing prep in between each game. Again, it was just to highlight our facilities, our community, and to host a quality World Series. And so approximate cost, I would say about $1,000.
All right, so in a thousand, so we've already spent $50,000, and essentially, we're paying an additional $1,000 to get back, you know, maybe $50,000 worth of value in a tournament. Is that then what I get out of this?
Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Rennie. Last year, the economic impact to the community, if they were to bring in 16 teams, I believe, was estimated to be $100,000 direct impact to Cheyenne.
I remember that, Mr. Sanchez, because we added $100,000 to our receivables in our budget, based on their promises.
And so that's where those dollars, again, economic impact?
You know, that's somewhat speculative, so I mean, really, in order for him to do $50,000 worth of work to host the tournament, we're spending an additional $1,000 in your expenses.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. So further discussion by the council?
Oh, man, Madam Mayor, I feel bad.
Why not, Mr. Sanchez?
I wasn't sure if you had left the room to handle this one.
I just, yeah. So a couple of things briefly. First of all, Mr. Sanchez, excellent job taking notes on the fly and answering a lot of impromptu questions. Very impressed with that. And second, you know, as someone who's had to draft contracts in the past to the city attorney, I know it is a much more difficult task to actually draft a contract than do what we're doing up here and question every line. So thank you for your work. The administration, I think, has really done what they can to make lemonade out of this lemon that we've all been delivered. And so I appreciate those efforts. Certainly, there are concerns that we've all expressed. I share a lot of those. Frankly, the options for getting $50,000 back are pretty small, and this was one way to try to, to try to recoup that over time. But to me, right now, with all the issues that are still exist, and really what I have not seen from Mr. Avila is a concrete financial commitment to rectify the situation from last time. I'm hesitant to enter into an agreement with him again until he does that. And, you know, hopefully, he does come forward, tries to make amends in an expeditious fashion so that we can attempt to renegotiate and get these tournaments in Cheyenne. But at the moment, I just, I can't go into business with him.
Thank you, Mr. Shaner. Further discussion?
One more, and I'll be quick.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a comment, really, he has the entire Western United States to buy from, so I doubt, if we vote no tonight, I doubt he'll be back in, as far as what happened last year. You know, Kaba's got written off, but I would not expect to see a World Series in the next five years or any of the other larger tournaments. I mean, it's just too big of a world market for these type of players to get into.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to take some indulgence, since I'm the only one that hasn't spoken.
Dean didn't talk yet.
Oh, okay. I, I...
You can keep the chair.
I'll be quick. I really do want to thank staff, Community Recreation Events, certainly our legal team. Just over a year ago, many of us were new into office, the Mustangs came forward, they had what we thought was a great tournament, we thought it was a great idea, we were all very enthused, and I don't think any one of us sitting up here said no. We were not going to say no to those kids. And so I think lesson learned. Fool us once, shame on us. Fool us twice, or shame on them, whatever they say, it's too late. But I think that we, in hearing everything, I really appreciate the information that the Mustangs have given. I think that what you've heard from here is certainly a commitment from the city council to do right by the taxpayer funds, to do right by our children. And with that, if there's no further comment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lewis.
You know, I said this in finance, and I'll say it real quick, a leopard don't change its spots. So I think this is probably a good idea to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? No. That fails. Okay, request for a five-minute break. All right, five minutes. All right, five minutes.
I don't have a big city or- Thank you. Appreciate it.
What are you doing?
Probably not. I go out for a good job before you get hit.
Well, actually, I wanted to talk to you about, uh, I'm wanting to-
All right. Let me know, are you, yeah. Yeah. I got all two, 'cause I don't use it, I also, I- Can you sit up? What are you doing?
We'll, we'll work something.
I just seen him the other day, he was doing pretty good.
All right, let me know. You?
Just saying we've got each other.
Okay.
Terrible.
Yeah, yeah, well, look at me else.
I'd be more happy to help you. Help me carry stuff, I can be-
I did part of Shark. It's not that long. If you can give it love, that part is kinda fun.
Yeah, I would just want to swear to God. At least, at least a couple of minutes.
Give me a shout.
Bet I would give a compliment, you may have read yesterday, but I'm working on it.
Same with, um, the-
Okay, we're back in session. Next item is number twenty-four D on page five, Professional Services Agreement Between the City of Cheyenne and Novo Benefits, The Mutual Liability Company for Employee Benefits Consulting and Brokerage Services.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Denise Freeman, Human Resources, I just wanted to start with a little bit of background. It was about this time last year, February two thousand seventeen, when we received a sixty-two percent increase from Cigna for our health insurance renewal. Um, the next couple of months, a city committee consisting of the city treasurer, the city attorney, an assistant city attorney, and the H.R. director met with Cigna several times, but they would not budge off of their renewal number. So sometime during the month of March, the committee determined a consultant was needed to assist with the renewal. The H.R. director contacted three vendors and ultimately entered into a short-term professional services agreement with Cobicon, which is now Novo Benefits. From March, April, and May, um, Novo requested proposals from Cigna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and United Healthcare. They also researched a number of options, um, with stop-loss carriers for self-funding. Ultimately, the committee chose a cost-competitive plan to present to council, and council asked to see more options. Um, they ultimately selected the plan that we have today. Since that time, um, we formed an Employee Benefits Committee consisting of nine members. Um, all employee groups and the council are represented on this committee. And we issued an RFP for a benefits consultant on November twenty-ninth of two thousand seventeen. We received six proposals, and the Employee Benefits Committee selected and interviewed three of those firms. The committee voted seventy to two, seven to two in favor of Novo Benefits, and they recommended a professional services agreement to the council on January twenty-second of two thousand eighteen. And that is, um, the agreement that you have before you today. The city was fortunate to have stable health coverage at a bargain price with Win Health for many years. Sadly, those days are over. Today's healthcare system is becoming increasingly complicated and expensive. We are spending over eight million dollars this year for the employer portion of the employee health insurance costs. This is a major expenditure that comprises sixteen percent of the general fund budget and nearly ten percent of the overall budget. According to a survey, um, from the Society for Human Resource Management, more than eighty-three percent of plan sponsors rely on consultants for expert advice and guidance with employee benefit programs. Novo Benefits has extensive knowledge and experience in the insurance market. They have relationships with key people in the, in the industry, and they have access to information and resources that we do not. They are experts in their field, and their negotiations saved the city roughly two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars last year. They also worked with the B.O.P.U. and Laramie County, saving them two hundred and fifty thousand and nine hundred thousand respectively. The two hundred-plus-thousand savings, um, from last year would more than cover the cost of the three-year contract. And broken down annually, the proposed fee is less than one percent of the health insurance costs. It would be prudent to partner with a benefits advisor to develop cost-saving strategies and create solutions to preserve our employees' benefits. Therefore, I recommend approval of the Novo, Novo agreement before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Is there, um, let me start, is there other, further discussion by the public? And if not, we will go to council to ask questions, or do you wanna make some statements first?
I, I wanted to just go through a list of questions that Councilman Case gave us, you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm okay not doing that if you guys are aware of it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might, um, I know this isn't necessarily appropriate time, but I, I could be wrong, but I believe most of the council has kinda gotten those answers, and if not, just letting you know.
So do you think there might not may be, do you feel like questions have, let me do this.
Which committee?
Okay, um, no further discussion by the public. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed two hundred eight thousand five hundred dollars, and I so move.
Okay, moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion and questions by council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. White.
Just wanna know how you saved the county nine hundred thousand.
Oh, Diana Mabey, consultant with Novo Benefits. We had done a plan design change for the county, and also the moment that, uh, we sent United Healthcare broker record later, later, they cut their rate in half, their renewal rate in half. They knew they had to get competitive, and they knew they needed to sharpen their pencil, so they made it a proactive decision to cut it in half right at the beginning, and then we started negotiating from there. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Questions from council? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion pass. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes with Dr. Reddy and Mr. Cook as a no. Thank you. Next item is number twenty-five A, Consideration of Bid Number E dash thirteen dash eighteen for furnishing one new mobile observation platform for the Cheyenne Police Department Homeland Security Grant. Thank you. Discussion by the public. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, I'm Lieutenant Terrence Bell of the Cheyenne Police Department. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, the Cheyenne Police Department applied for a Homeland Security Grant in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars to purchase a mobile observation platform that allows to, uh, prevent and respond to incidents in large, uh, public venues, uh, Frontier Days, uh, Downtown Depot, or the, uh, Laramie County Fair. Uh, so, we received the grant, and now we're seeking approval through the coun- uh, through the council to, uh, continue with that purchase and get that built and get it operational.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion by the public? Discussion by the public. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to accept the bid from Industrial Video and Control of Greenville, South Carolina, in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council? Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
What's, what's this gonna look like?
Madam Mayor, through you. Sir, I, I have a picture, if I could show you, it'd be much easier to show you the picture. Pass it along. It'd be this minus the, uh, solar panels that are attached to it. So it's about eleven feet long, it's like nine feet tall at the top of the, uh, tower. It's, uh, been retracted, it's like three feet wide.
So you send a camera up on it, not a cop?
I'm sorry, sir.
You send a camera up on it, you don't put a cop on it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. White, well, you can do the ribbon-cutting ceremony on that.
I don't know, sir.
Is there any other, is there any other, is there any other discussion by council? Dr. Murray, uh, Mr. President. Mr. President. Mr. President.
So looking at the contract, we're, um, there are four figures there, two of them are bold, two are not, so we're just doing, um, the hundred and twelve three fifty, the twenty-seven six fifty, and now the other two items is accurate.
Madam Mayor, through you. No, sir, it's, uh, the eleven, or, hundred and twelve three fifty plus twenty-seven six fifty for a hundred and forty thousand. The, uh, fifteen seven fifty and the eleven eight were, uh, add-on equipment that I had put in the bid specs, so if we had money left over, we could get a license plate reader or a removable signboard, but since all the money was taken up-
That those are not included, the license plate reader and the removable signboard are not included in the bid.
No, sir.
That's what I, that's how I read that, I wanna make sure I'm correct.
Mr. Shaner.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, real quick, I'm, just in general, I'm always curious, um, when there's only one bid. Do we know any one, reason why we sent it out to twenty different vendors and only got one back?
Madam Mayor, do you, I do not know why we only got one bid. It was written fairly generic as far as the equipment, you know, a, a camera that would do this, not a particular model, not a particular, you know, brand or anything. Um, I was in touch with three or four vendors, uh, doing my research, uh, acquiring my information for how I wanted to design this, so I assumed I would have at least three or four bids, and when they didn't bid, it surprised me too, so I don't know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions by council? Other questions? Thank you very much. Hearing no further questions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Joneson as a no. Next item is number twenty-seven A, Appointment of Amy M. Allen as City Engineer for the City of Cheyenne. Don't hear a motion.
So move. Second.
Moved by Mr. White, well, seconded by Mr. White. Discussion by council. Discussion by council.
Welcome. You're welcome.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, and this being, um, an item that pursuant to the state statute and ordinance, um, this being a mayoral appointment, I am unable to vote. So all those in favor of this appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes with my abstention. Welcome. Oh, thank you very much. Um, and then I would like to announce, um, Mrs. Amy Allen is gonna be sworn in tomorrow, um, upstairs in the mayor's office. The public is welcome to attend, it'll be at nine a.m. Um, Judge, Judge Mark Moran will be swearing, um, her in, and so please join us if, uh, if you will. I'll have coffee and maybe some treats for Mr. White.
Excellent.
Next item is number twenty-seven D, Announcement of Public Hearing to Be Held Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for renewal applications for existing physical licenses and permits, retail, restaurant, limited retail, resort, bar, and grill licenses, and microbrewery and satellite distillery permits filed with the city clerk's office. Announcement that due to the President's Day holiday on Monday, February nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, regularly scheduled city council committee meetings will instead be held in the municipal building, twenty-one oh one O'Neal Avenue, room one oh four, Cheyenne, Wyoming, as follows. Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, at eleven a.m., and Public Services Committee will meet Wednesday, February twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at noon. Other business? Thank you, sir. Other business by the public to come before the council? Any other business? Any other business from council? Any other business from council? Mr. Johnson.
Dr. Rennie is right, it's actually ten percent, which explains the amount that I actually won when we played trivia crap together.
Any other discussion by council? All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.